Good evening. Welcome to the September 16th, 2021 meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. As you may have noted on the signs when you walked into Town Hall, those fully vaccinated are no longer required to wear a face covering at Town Hall, though as you can also see, some of our board members and staff, including myself, will be keeping their masks on. Please be advised that the Board's next meeting, October 7th, 2021, will be held via video conferencing, so check the town's website or call the Board Secretary closer to the meeting date to get the Zoom information to participate or watch the meeting. Not only that meeting will be by Zoom, but for the foreseeable future, for right now, we're going to be switching back to Zoom meetings. With that said, I ask that you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will be starting tonight's meeting with the public hearings. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the Board. Members of the public are typically given a three-minute time limit on their testimony, so please keep that in mind. Also, since we are in the auditorium tonight, a reminder that you must speak directly into the microphone in order to be heard. We have to do that as well. Feel free to take the microphone out of the holder if that's more comfortable for you, but please speak loudly and directly into the microphone. A couple of other things before we continue. If you have cell phones on you, if you can do us a favor and turn them off or silence them because they interfere with our recording equipment, and in addition, if you're inclined to speak to one another in the auditorium during the meeting, if you can do us a favor and go into the hallway rather than speaking in the auditorium to one another, that would be very much appreciated because that also interferes with our recording equipment. Just also want to read the emergency exit. You know, the emergency exit rules are a little bit different because we're in the auditorium, but basically you're going to be exiting through the rear doors of this room to one of the, well, not staircases, you're going to be going across the hall and you'll go to the main entrance and exit through the main entrance. I think the rear doors are going to be right there? I'm not sure whether that exit is good or not.
Yeah, I'll go up there where the ramp is.
Out here, okay. So the main door going towards the front entrance is where you should go if there's an emergency. So, in any case, there's a defibrillator upstairs, but I'll read it. In case of a medical emergency, the automated external defibrillator and first aid kits are both located in the hallway on the second floor opposite the elevator. And with that, I would make a motion or ask for a motion that we approve the minutes of our last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And next, I had a motion to amend the minutes of our August 19th meeting because we just had a correction to make on that.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And now on to adjournments.
Okay. Item four on the agenda, which is Richard Doyle, 65 Waters Edge Road, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-62-1-52. I'll move that, going to re-advertise that for our 10-7 meeting.
Not for yet.
Okay. And then item seven, eight, and nine will be re-advertized for 12-16, adjourned to 12-16, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do we have seconds on that motion?
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And now we're down to the decision calendars. All right. Joseph Musnickney and Charlene Quinlan will be, will have a determination at our 10-7 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
111 Schwanks LLC will be determination on our 10-7 meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Town of Southampton Housing Authority, 86 Vale Avenue, Town of Southampton Housing Authority, 116 Vale Avenue, and Town of Southampton Housing Authority, 69 Old Cork Road will be, will have a determination at our 10-7 meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Hazy Wolf LLC will be determination on our 10-7 meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
I'd like to move to reopen Harvey Herman so we can accept written submissions.
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Reopened.
All right, now I'll move to close it so that we can have a determination tonight.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Michael and Amy O'Brien will have a determination on our 10-7 meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Kimberly McCready, move to reopen so we can accept written submissions.
So moved.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Yeah, I'll move to close that now so that we can have a determination later this evening.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Nice Let Real Estate Holdings Development Corp. will have a determination at our 10-7 meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Scott Schlatter, determination at our 10-7 meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Karen and Brian Coyle will have a determination at our 10-7 meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Edward and Patricia Burke will have a determination at our October 21st meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Robert Postma and Janet Wellen, move that we reopen that so we can accept written submissions.
So moved.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Reopened.
Now I move to close it so we can have a determination tonight.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Richard Stott will have a determination, determination, excuse me, at our 10-7 meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
85 Eastway LLC, determine, will have a determination at our 10-7 meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Barbara Swilshlaski, move to reopen to accept written submissions.
So moved.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Reopened.
Now I'll move to close with a determination later this evening.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Okay. Okay. Item one on the agenda is John and Victoria Petrillo, 31 East Beach Drive, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-42-1-9. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. One, for the proposed dwelling on a non-conforming lot, 330-83K, yards for a principal minimum side yard setback of 7.5 feet from the south side of the property line where 10 feet is permitted. And two, 330-84D pyramid height for pyramid encroachment in the amount of 7,384 cubic feet, 3,413 cubic feet on the south side and 3,971 cubic feet on the north side. Two, for the proposed porch with a second-story deck on the west side of the dwelling, 330-83K for a principal side yard of 7.3 feet from the south side of the property where 10 feet is permitted. Three, for the proposed deck on the west side of the dwelling, 330-11 residential districts table of dimensional regulations for an accessory setback of seven feet where 10 feet is required. And four, for the proposed mechanicals located on the north side of the property, AC units, 330-77G placement of accessory building structures and uses in resident districts for a setback of plus or minus four feet where 10 feet is required, and any other relief necessary. Is there anything else? You need the kitchen sink?
The Board has jurisdiction.
You want the kitchen sink?
Yes.
Okay. To set this where you're in, Susanna, if you can just state your name and address for the record, please.
Susanna Herman. There you go. And Consultants, 1319 North Sea Road, Southampton.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. If you can tell us about the application, you might want to tilt the...
Tilt it down?
Yeah, a little bit. It might help.
How's that?
Okay. That's, I think that should be fine.
I apologize in advance that I know you know the acoustics are terrible.
Yep.
I have a soft voice. I know Helen's going to struggle with that, but I'm going to do my best to articulate through the mask. The Petrillos are also here, John and Victoria. In case you have any questions for them, we can sign them in if necessary, swear them in if necessary. I have photographs of the site, which I'll pass up. I have a copy for everybody.
Okay.
The first few are just the house and surrounding property, and then there's a couple aerials on the back which speak to the character of the neighborhood.
Okay.
The property is located at 31 East Beach Drive. It may sound familiar because you've issued a lot of variances on this stretch of property. I was before you with another application in May for 9 East Beach Drive for Ralph Petrillo, Ralph and Mia Petrillo. That is Mr. Petrillo's brother. So a lot of this may sound familiar. It's a very similar situation. The lot is 10,797 square feet. It's in an R15 zoning district, and it's only 60 feet wide. There are wetlands involved. The border's on Little Poconic Bay, so wetlands permits were required from the town and the DEC. In fact, we got relief from town setbacks in order to be 80 feet from the nearest wetland line where 100 feet is required. So we can't move any closer to the water. The entire street front of the property is taken up by the proposed sanitary system. Of course, there would be an IA septic system on the street side of the property. We're further encumbered by extremely shallow depth to groundwater. We have 2.4 feet to groundwater, and we are in a flood zone. We're in an AE6 flood zone, so the first floor elevation has to be elevation eight. We're actually proposing the house at elevation 10 to give a little extra security from rising floodwaters and rising sea levels. If you're familiar with the street, you probably know that there has been flooding in this area, so the house is proposed at an elevation of 10 feet above sea level where eight is The existing house has been there since pre-1957. We just got a pre-existing CO, but it's only for demolition of the existing house. The house is not currently habitable. It's been flooded in recent storms. The pyramid relief that we're requesting is actually, I handed in revised plans from the architect this week. It's actually 8,595 cubic feet, which is slightly more than what was on the initial application.
What was that number? 8,000 what?
8,595.
Okay.
That's 5,333 on the south side and 3,262 on the north side. I'm not sure the reason for the discrepancy. The house didn't change. I think just the way it was calculated was corrected.
Could you repeat the sides?
The south side pyramid is 5,333, and the north side is 3,262. So it's 5, 333.
Yep.
And 3, 262.
So even, even for the street, which is a very nice street and a really nice neighborhood in the town, it's a lot of pyramid relief, and we're going to talk about that.
Right.
Yep.
So, speaking to pyramid relief on the street, I have copies of the other variances, which I'll hand up for the record. I won't go into every single detail, however, at 39 Beach Drive, 5,184 cubic feet. At 9 each Beach Drive, 5,023 cubic feet. At 48 East Beach Drive, 6,349 square feet. Directly across the street at 34 East Beach Drive, 9,813 cubic feet was granted. That's the...
When year was that?
Um, not that long ago, we got that, the wetland permits for that project, remember. That was 2013.
That was eight years ago.
Right.
Not quite.
That's not so long ago. I mean, relative to...
Eight years.
So I'll hand these up. Oh, and one more. At 54, it's 1,794 square feet, cubic feet. Also, if you're familiar with the street, you're aware that most of the houses are pre-existing non-conforming. There are a lot of side yard setbacks that are similar to those that we are proposing. Because of section, because we need a wetland permit, Section 330-83K applies, so our side yard setbacks allowed are 10 feet. We're asking for a little bit of relief on the south side to go to seven feet at the closest point. The property adjacent to this, to the north, just for the character of the neighborhood, their side yard setbacks are 7.8 and 5.6 feet. However, I will point out on the north, we are separated from that property by a 10-foot wide pedestrian right-of-way, so it's as if we had an additional 10 feet to that neighbor.
Yeah.
I'll hand up a copy of those variances and the adjacent.
How much relief did the house immediately next door get?
Immediately next, which side?
On the south side.
The south side, that is the Caruso property. It's a very large house relative to that property, but that's one of the smaller cubic feet that's... I just handed...
It's a larger lot.
As I recall, it was over 1,000 cubic feet, maybe about 1,400 cubic feet. The property directly to the south had about 1,400 square feet. It's not in the list that I provided, so that's an additional one.
These lines are not right.
The proposed house is not out of character as far as square footage of the house. The footprint is just over 15,000 square feet. It's got a one-car garage. It's got four very small bedrooms. I'm sorry, what did you say the square footage is for the house? The footprint of the house, proposed house, is 1,573. That's a two-story house, and that includes an attached one-car garage. It's a four-bedroom house, but the bedrooms are quite small. It's not an excessively large house. The total roof height is well within allowable limits. We're allowed to go to elevation 42. We're only going to 37.5. The total house from first floor to roof height is only 27 and a half feet, where 32 feet is your typical...
What are the interior ceiling heights?
I'm sorry?
What are the interior ceiling heights, first and second floor?
First floor is nine feet. Proposed second floor is eight foot six. So again, not excessive ceiling heights.
Now, you mentioned in the beginning that they're raising the house 10 feet, which is greater than what FEMA requires, right?
Correct.
Do you have the calculations, how much the cubic foot relief would be if you only raised the house, say, eight feet or nine feet?
I do not, but I could, I could have the architect calculate those.
Yeah. And, and you know, I just want to mention regarding it going above and beyond FEMA, we encourage people who own property in areas where there is danger of flooding to exceed the FEMA requirements if necessary because we want, we want people to be protected from flooding issues in their homes. That having been said, if you take a look at the other applications where you just handed in decisions, Susanna, I suspect if you take a look at them, each of them was scrutinized before we ended up at the number, numbers we ended up at. And a lot of it depends on the size of the lot. It may be that the one with the very large number may be a much smaller lot. I'm not sure.
It is a little bit smaller, and the width of that lot is only 50 feet, whereas the width of this lot is 60 feet.
Yeah.
But that house is at a first floor elevation of 11, so they went up an additional foot farther than we're proposing.
Right.
So the sizes of the house are comparable, and this lot is 10 feet wider.
Yeah. So there's a history of us granting pyramid relief on houses on this street that is, you know, more than we've granted in other areas of the, of the town overall, but we still scrutinize, and we're, we're still going to ask questions, and we're still, still going to see what can be done to reduce where it can be reduced. But I for one, want to see this applicant to be, to be two feet above FEMA requirements.
I, I would recommend that as well.
Yeah.
I would not recommend them build at elevation eight feet.
Yeah.
I would recommend that they build at 10 feet.
I, I understand.
If not higher.
But, but that having been said, now that we have ceiling heights and we have the other information, we'll see where else we can possibly reduce the total number, at least. And again, I'm speaking for myself. I don't know where the other board members are on this, but my sense of it as, is that we're, you know, we're going to look at it as, as we would look at any application that's, that's of this, this amount. Yeah.
No, I agree about raising to, you know, exceed FEMA because we don't know where that's going to go, but at the same time, it's, it seems like the, the average of the neighborhood is somewhere around 5,000 cubic feet, which we're significantly over.
Yeah. So in any case, then the question becomes what can be done to reduce that, the number overall, while keeping it two feet above FEMA.
Right. How, how many square foot is the proposed house?
The footprint is 1,573.
Like 3,100 feet.
Yeah. More or less. I think the, the second floor might be slightly smaller.
Yeah. I mean, you, you have a, you have a small lot, you have FEMA, and then you, they're asking for high ceilings, and I, I just feel it's excessive. I feel it's excessive, and I'd like to see where they might be able to bring that number down. The 8,600, is that what you said?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot.
8,595.
8,595.
Yep.
I think it could be done a variety of ways. I mean, it could be done with roof lines. It could be done with, I mean, they're asking for two and a half feet on each side in terms of relief from the side yard to comply at 10, so you could, you know, shrink the house five feet, which will cut out a lot of pyramid. You could change the direction of the roof lines. I would like to see it closer to 5,000 personally, seeming to be where the, the neighborhood seems to be like that. I mean, there's a large house next door, and it seems like they didn't, they did that with less relief. Now, that's a larger lot.
It is a larger lot.
But, you know, when you, you buy the lot knowing what you can get, the house seems very square, so when you're dealing with a pyramid, it seems like roof lines could be affected by that. You could step, step the house forward or backwards. I think there's ways architecturally to do it to come to around 5,000 feet.
Yeah. We don't have anywhere to go.
No, I understand that because you're squeezed both ways, but the house might have to get smaller than, I think that's, you know, I'm okay with the other things, but I, I need to see the, the pyramid relief be around 5,000.
I agree. And I want it to be reduced as well, and I'd like it to see, to see it be around 5,000, but if you come back and you say, the best we can do is six, I can live with that, but, you know, just want to see what can be done.
Okay.
You just need to get to four, that's all.
I mean, the roof runs contrary to what the pyramid direction is, right? So if they switch the roof directions, you're going to cut out a lot. If they're not, the ceiling is only 8/6 on the second floor, there's a lot of attic space up there that's not habitable space, but they can change the roof lines and eliminate a lot of pyramid and not really impact their design.
Right. I'll have to talk to the architect. Of course, remember, we don't have any mechanical below FEMA, so all...
Correct.
Mechanical room, all of the duct work, all of that has to be in that attic or in mechanical...
Or in a mechanical closet on the first or second floor.
So we, we are, we do have a lot of constraints, not just the lot size and the wetlands.
Yeah. No, and we, and we appreciate that. We, we understand that.
Sounds like the Board would like to see if you could cut it down a little bit, Susanna.
All right.
All right.
Do you guys want to say anything?
Okay. All right. Susanna, have you heard from any of the neighbors? You might have mentioned that earlier, actually.
Um, I did not mention that.
I did.
I know Mr. Petrillo spoke with his neighbor to the north.
Susanna, back in the microphone, please.
What? Back in the microphone? I'm sorry. I know Mr. Petrillo did speak with the neighbor to the north and answered his questions. I don't know if they wanted to show up tonight or not.
Okay. We'll find out soon enough.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Aside's going over the concerns we had about pyramid, I just want to ask, generally, are we okay with the setback relief?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said, other than the problems, concerns that we have about pyramid, is the Board, I just want to give the, before Susanna goes and works on this to redesign, I just want to make sure that the Board is otherwise okay with the setback relief that's being requested.
I agree with Brian on the pyramid, and I'm comfortable with the setbacks.
They may need to reduce the setback because that's the only way to reduce the pyramid.
I understand, but just, you know, if there was, you know, a setback.
If they were able to reduce the pyramid without the setbacks, I would be comfortable with it.
Yeah.
I do want to point out that one of the variances that Marjorie picked up on that we didn't include in the application is the air conditioner units, which are in the side yard about four feet from the property line where 10 is required. I just want to make sure you're not overlooking that and make sure that's.
How far are those?
What is that setback?
It's required to be 10.
No, but what is it?
Four.
It says plus or minus, it's four?
Yeah, well, plus or minus four, I don't have.
Oh, that's not on the revised survey?
No.
That has to be on the revised survey.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. In addition, we have building department comments. I don't know if you saw them already, Susanna?
I did.
Okay. So if you've addressed them with Marjorie, that's fine, but I just wanted to make you aware that we had comments from her about the plans and about the survey being revised.
I think we've addressed all of her comments, except I think they neglected to do a dimension to the air conditioner. But I measured it at four feet, it's plus or minus four feet, we can add that. If there's a fence that needed to be removed, we're showing that to be removed within the pedestrian right of way, and we corrected the pyramid drawings.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions of members of the board? Or Katie, is there anyone from the public who's, I'm sorry, you have to, you have to go over to a microphone, sorry. This room is terrible, terrible for yet to hear, it's really quite the problem.
Hi, I'm Bill Mahoney, we have a 33 East Beach Drive.
Okay, Bill, I just have to swear you in. If you can state your full address, please.
William T. Mahoney, Jr.
And your address?
25 Devon Place, Southampton.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, if you can tell us your comments.
Okay, my only concern is where the house is going to be placed on the lot. Because from this whole community, there's like a line that all of the houses are built on, the setback from the water to the front of the house. And it goes from East Beach all the way down. There's a house on East Beach now that was granted permission to build the house like 30 feet further out towards the bay than any other house on either strip. And I hope that is not going to be followed.
Okay, well, we have a survey submitted with the application that shows where the proposed house is. So let's see if someone can show you a copy. Okay, and we, but you have to go into the microphone, I'm sorry.
This doesn't show the placement in regards to the other houses on either side of it.
Okay, so Susanna, you have to go to the microphone, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if I had an aerial photograph.
The aerial photograph that I submitted might be helpful, if I could borrow.
Okay, sure.
If you look at the last page.
Go up to the mic, Susan.
Yeah, got to go to the mic, I'm sorry.
If you go to the last page, figure seven and figure eight, you see on the, I guess really figure eight. There's the Caruso house.
Which is the one that's pushed way forward.
Right, we're not going to be going out as far as that, that house is going to be.
Okay, we're not getting any of this on the microphone because you guys have to be right, like, just like I am, right up to it.
Figure eight and the photographs submitted is an aerial photograph that shows this property relative to the other properties along the beach.
Right.
And you can see the property to the south, the Caruso property, which is the large one with the red roof, is pushed out significantly farther than the other houses. We're not going to be extending as far seaward as that house. I don't have a relative number, but we're not going to be blocking the view.
Yeah, okay, okay. Well, the one thing I want to mention is the aerial, it shows what presently exists, it's not showing the proposed.
Shows what currently exists, not what's proposed.
Correct, so.
So you say not going as far, it could go a foot further back, and that's not as far.
Yep, so Susanna, I'm not sure whether you can provide this gentleman with some other information, maybe, you know, since we're going to be adjourning it. But if you could, that would be helpful to give him more of a sense or an answer to his question, to the, you know, the best of your ability. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Is there anyone else who is waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Petrillo? This is for property located at 31 East Beach Drive in North Sea. Okay, does not appear to be anybody else. So Susanna, if you want to come back up, then we'll figure out when you'd like to come back. We do have a little bit of room on our agenda for our next meeting, which is in three weeks, but maybe you need a little bit longer in order to deal with the issues that we've discussed.
What's the date of that meeting?
October 7.
I think we could probably, I think the architect's local, I think he can make the revisions in that timeframe.
Okay, okay, all right. I'm not the lead on the application, so Mike, you will be making the motion.
Okay, good, so make a motion to continue this, leave it open for all purposes for the next meeting, which will be October 7.
Second.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Tuttle.
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Chair of society, thank you for being here, have a good rest of your night.
Thank you, good night.
Okay.
Item two on the agenda is 47 Pheasant Walk in South, Bridhampton, excuse me, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-135-5-5. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code to reestablish a non-conforming lot on a filed subdivision not continuously held in single and separate ownership. One, Town Code 330-11 Residential Districts Table of Dimensional Regulations as it relates to Town Code 292-44 Exemptions and Waivers for a lot area of 59,006.37, 6.37 square feet, where 60,000 square feet is required. And two, Town Code 330-82 Lot Width to allow a minimum road frontage of 37.56 feet at the street line where a minimum of 40 feet is required, and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Good evening. Good evening, board members. Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Marsh Sensing and Bruin, Southampton, New York, on behalf of Pheasant Walk Holdings LLC.
Wayne, you might want to tip the microphone, or I don't know.
You might want to pick it up.
Yeah. If you, you can take it out. Make it closer.
There we go.
Yeah. Did you get everything before?
Uh, not sure. Again, Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Marsh Sensing and Bruin, on behalf of the applicant. We're here tonight, as the notice indicated, to reestablish a lot on a filed map. The subdivision map of SAG Bridhampton Corp., Section 1, was filed in 1967. At that time, the property was zoned A Residence, which required 40,000 square feet lots, 150 square feet, 150 feet of front lot width. In 1972, as part of the comprehensive rezoning, the subdivision map in the area was rezoned to R60, and it remains R60 today. The subject property contains, as the notice indicated, 59,006 square feet, which is just shy, a little less than 1,000 square feet shy of the 60,000 square foot requirement. And also, this parcel was on a cul-de-sac and had certain frontage on that cul-de-sac, which is actually a couple feet shy of the 40 feet of frontage that is normally on a street. We're trying to reestablish this lot on the filed map, and just so you know, the lot was purchased a little back history. The subdivision map, and we provided a copy of that subdivision map in the record, but this property and the adjoining lot to the west, lots 50 and 51, are pretty much an anomaly in this map. They were both, the lot 50 to the west is over 60,000, and this one was just shy of 60,000. The other 52 lots in this 54 lot subdivision are all about 40,000 square feet. So this was, these are the only two lots in that map, and they were pretty close to 60,000 square feet. Lot 50, the lot to the west, was acquired and a house was built there in 1975. About five or six years later, the prior owners acquired the subject lot, Lot 51, to the east because they wanted to build a tennis court. And as you know, the code until 2010 did not allow an accessory structure to be built on a lot without a principal. So they were told by the building department, the only way they could get a tennis court is if they acquired the lot next door, they acquired the lot in the same name, separate deed, it's maintained as a separate tax parcel. Ordinarily, I'd be in front of you trying to argue that this should be considered single and separate.
Correct.
However.
Yep.
The one part of the test, do they function together, or were they intended to function together, clearly, we wouldn't be able to meet.
We would not.
So we're here for the requisite lot area and frontage variances to basically reestablish this lot. The current owner is purchased in 2006, and their intent is to demolish the tennis court and build a single-family dwelling. The lot area, as I mentioned in our petition, is just shy of 1,000 square feet, which represents about 1.66% deviation from the 60,000 square foot requirement. So in other words, it's essentially de minimis. The reduction in the 40-foot frontage to 37 feet is de minimis as well. We have heard from our neighbors, predominantly in the neighborhood, that there's no objections. This lot is controlled by my client with some other lots in the neighborhood, so they clearly wouldn't have objections to their proposal as well. So that's the argument, I believe our petition is there. It identifies how we meet the tests, if the board has any particular questions, I'm available to answer those.
So, well, I was just going to ask, so the relief is to reestablish a non-conforming lot, so if we grant the requested relief for lot area and lot width, that's all you need, or do you have to go to the planning board?
That's it, no. Actually, the planning board, if, under the subdivision regulations, if you're reestablishing a lot, and this board does that, on a filed map that was filed after 1957, in other words, when there was zoning, the subdivision regulations, and I mentioned that in our petition, actually do exempt that from subdivision review. If we alter lot lines or something like that, you know, then that would be a question this board, is can you obviate the need for the variance by going to the planning board and moving a lot line over? Then, you know, that would require planning board approval and re-subdivision and everything else. So the key here, and frankly, we looked at that alternative, and there isn't much you could do to get the square footage for both lots and the frontage. So we're here, and it does not require planning board approval.
Okay. Brian, you got a question?
No, I drove the neighborhood, I saw that, it seems like it fits in. I know this board has done what's requested, you know, recently, I know we've done some similar relief on Strong's Lane and Watermill, and there was another one in Bridhampton in the last few years of reestablishing, so I don't have an issue with it.
And like I said, these lots, two lots are oversized compared to the other 52 lots in this subdivision, so.
And it's a cul-de-sac, so the relief with the lot frontage, you know, there's enough frontage there, you know, for a.
Yes.
Code-comply driveway and everything else.
If it was a flag lot, you only need 20.
20, great.
And state code is 15, you have 37, so we have enough for access.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, and the reality is, the relief that's being requested is about as minimal as could be.
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have a problem with it either.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions of members of the board? Wayne, have you heard from any of the neighbors?
Like I said, about the only neighbors are, who are north, and we have not heard from them directly. I know my client corresponds with them, and if they did have some concerns, they would have directed it to him right away.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Pheasant Walk Holdings LLC? This is for property located at 47 Pheasant Walk in Bridhampton. If not, Brian, it's yours.
Okay, senior hearing, no one. Move that we close the public hearing, leaving the written record open until October 1st with a decision on our 10/21, on our October 21st meeting. Second.
Thank you.
Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Cohen.
Er, yes, aye.
Kern, I'm sorry. Sorry, Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Tuttle.
Aye.
Chair of society.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yeah, I'm getting it, buddy. Okay. Item three on the agenda is 95 Inlet Road West LLC in Shinnecott Hills, 95 Inlet Road West, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-176-1-1. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code to legalize a framed shed, 12.2 feet by 14.9 feet, constructed without the benefit of a building permit. 330-11 Residential Districts Table of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory distance from street setback, front yard of 13 feet from the Westley property line, North Beach Road. And two, 330-76D Placement of Accessory Building Structures and Uses in All Districts, and 330-83C Yards to allow the shed to remain within the required front yard for the principal dwelling, building, a non-conforming lot, and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Good evening, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing okay. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Echeena Rigdon, DKR Shores, here to represent 95 Inlet Road LLC.
And your address?
Oh, 235 Trout Brook Lane in Aquabog.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, if you can tell us about the application.
Okay, we have an existing shed that was installed without the benefit of a permit. It's 182 square feet total. Okay. I've never done this before, I feel like I'm singing karaoke. It's 12.2 feet wide by 14.9, that includes the roof line. It's located on 13 feet from the arc of North Beach Road. Inlet Road, even though it's a street, is the rear, anything opposite the water is the rear. So our front, we have a very small lot, it's only a little over 14,000 square feet, with a very, very small house, 1,334 square feet, and a very constrained lot because we have technically three front yards. So we have the water, Cold Spring, inlet, North Beach Road, and inlet road, which is my rear. So the applicant, actually, his contractor had called Town of Southampton, like most do, and said, "Do I need a permit for a shed?" Apparently, he was told no. He did, and he would need it regardless Conservation Board, or in a conforming location. So.
What was the name of the contractor?
I have no idea.
I'd like to know.
I would too, I have no idea. I think it was one of those built already sheds that gets moved in, so I don't think it was actually built on site, I think it was prefab.
Yeah, he probably told the building department that it was going to be, or that it was going to be a conforming location. And I don't know about the size of the shed, but if it was going to be in a conforming location, depending on the size, it may not have needed a permit. So who knows what the contractor.
Correct, they didn't do their homework, so here I am.
I understand.
This has already been in front of Marty. He is okay with the shed and the placement where it is. So here is my argument. If I move the shed, it will interfere with the new IA OWTS system we're planning, which I have some copies of, photocopies of where it's supposed to go. I am waiting for the engineer to give me final design. This actually had a former plan that was approved by the Conservation Board for a conventional sanitary system in the same location, which is in the front yard, I should say, the inlet roadside near the road. So that is my space I need for a new sanitary system. There is also, which I will pass out in a moment, a very large, stunning red maple adjacent just up against the corner of the house. I would try not to disturb that even during the sanitary system, because it, as you know, maples are a wetland indicative species, they have fluted trunks, and what you don't see under the gravel is the fluted trunk system. I'm going to try not to disturb while I'm doing the sanitary system.
Well, I wish you luck with that, because that may not happen.
So, the shed, if I had to move it, I could shift it towards the house, which could potentially hurt the tree. I could shift it towards the water, and that would make Marty not very happy, but that would be up to the board. I have about maybe five to seven feet to play with that might not hurt the tree or be in the way of the sanitary system. So if I could just pass out some pictures, I want to explain them to you.
Sure.
I don't know about you folks, but I'm more concerned about the septic.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Save the trees.
The first thing I want to give you.
Oh, 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 you can't talk.
Up, up, I'm sorry. Yep.
Okay, so those are photocopies of the space I need for my sanitary system, with a pink circle where my red maple is. Now I'm going to show you pictures of the red maple, which is why I really would like to keep it.
I don't know if it's going to survive the installation of the new sanitary system.
I don't know either, but I'm sure they're trying.
These are drawn on, though, I mean, these aren't.
Yeah, I know, I know. Katie, the engineer's working on it, I don't have the design for the new IA system yet.
So you folks know, when you have a new sanitary system, often your yard becomes a desert afterwards, so, you know, that's the reason I'm bringing it up.
Right.
Everything is gone in order to install the system.
Okay, I printed out a couple of larger pictures, so what you can really see in these is the fact that you can't see the shed from the road at all. It's highly vegetated. Mr. Manetti has. Mr. Manani has been voted a good environmental steward by the Conservation Board, has planted numerous native species, and retained natural vegetation as well on the corner lot. Okay, what I'm going to present next, as Marjorie had stated in her 8/31/21 assessment of the application, she wanted to make sure it wouldn't interfere with pyramid law. So I'm going to distribute to you some smaller, reduced copies, but I do have hard-scale, original, signed, sealed copies I picked up on the way here. Candace, if you want two of them tonight, I will give them to you. If you want them in the morning, I will give them to you then. Tonight, got it?
How much did it cost to buy and install the shed?
That's, that's, sorry. I just put in a shed. And it cost about $8,000 to have that shed built and put in.
And put in, okay.
So it is on a concrete slab, so if I had to move it, I would have to rip up the concrete slab and then put a new concrete slab.
Yep.
So...
But we're not talking about financial, significant financial hardship if you had to give up the shed? But obviously, your clients want it, and that's why you're here.
So...
So, not that I'm necessarily saying that the relief is going to be denied, but I'm just pointing out that...
I totally agree.
Yeah, yeah.
I completely agree.
The realities of this are not a huge financial loss. On the other hand, you know, you're here to do your job, and you're asking us to grant relief for the shed. One of the things with sheds is if we grant relief for sheds, we have to make sure that the shed is structurally sound. I don't know whether you submitted anything on that as of yet?
You'll see building plans that were actually drawn by an architect. I could have that shed affidavit, saying it's structurally sound, and present that to you.
We're going to need that, yeah.
Of course, I absolutely would do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, what I'd also like to point out is, not only can you not see the shed, it's one feet away, actually, from being out of Conservation Board jurisdiction. This property actually benefits from an NJ letter, so I could shift it towards the road more, but I don't think that would make you guys any happy. And if I shifted it towards the water, I don't think that would make Marty very happy. I could maybe shift it towards the house and not compromise either location of the new sanitary or the tree, approximately five to seven feet, so 13 would become 20, ideally, if I had to. But let me point out one more thing. If this was a regular-sized shed, under the definitions of the 335, less than 120 square feet, or I should say 120 square feet or less, it would be able to be placed 10 feet from the side and the rear. On a waterfront lot, that's what you guys allow. So it's a slightly bigger than not even needing a building permit, and then normally, a shed slightly smaller would be able to be placed 10 feet from the side and rear. We're at 13.
So tell me why you wouldn't want to have it at 20 feet instead of 13 feet?
Just the fact that it would cause disturbance, and I hate causing disturbance, we would have to redo, we'd have to actually pick it up, completely move it out of the way, build a new slab or footings in an area where there's an extensive root system of a red maple, and place it on the foundation, which could either buckle from the root system underneath, eventually, sometime in the future, or compromise, you know, the footings, and if it's on a slab, it would definitely compromise and crack the slab.
I'll tell you something else. I am not comfortable voting for relief for this shed unless I know who the contractor was who created the situation.
I could definitely ask who, I think, like I said, it was pre-built and brought in.
Yeah, I just want...
But I'm not sure who.
I understand, but at least at a minimum, I would want information in the record as to who created this situation.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned. I don't necessarily buy that it's the building department. I don't deny that there was a phone call, but I suspect that that phone call was about a conforming shed. But in any case, that information, I think, would be very helpful.
I would like to know that as well.
Yeah.
Because he's not allowed to use that guy anymore.
And then the other thing is, if we're going in the direction, well, to consider whether to go to the 13, from the 13 feet to the 20 feet, or any other location, the cost, the financial impact on the applicant of doing that, I think was a consideration. So I don't know if you can get an estimate as to what it would cost?
It's probably around $3,000. It's 600 to move it, and then the foundation, a new concrete footing, and then demoing that footing, it's around 3,000.
Why don't you just get an estimate, all right?
Yeah, I could do that.
Okay.
Not from the same guy that put it in.
All right.
No.
So the question is, what we want to do?
Anybody here?
Well, we can certainly ask. Any other questions, members of the board?
Is the board comfortable with the survey showing the hand-drawn-in septic system?
No.
Not necessarily, no, not necessarily.
It's going to be probably at least three months for me to get the engineer and the surveyor to coordinate and get this into the health department properly.
Your testimony is that you can't move it because of that.
The good news is, the shed's already there, so you don't have to wait to build it.
Shed's already there, so...
Well, then again, we don't want to encourage people to put structures up without permits by...
I agree.
Giving them a break that we wouldn't give somebody who had a proposed shed.
There were also comments from the building department.
I totally agree, and 30% of what I do is people doing stupid stuff.
Okay, so, Agina, did you see the comments from the building department?
I did.
You did, okay.
So that was basically pyramid, and then the other note on the garage, which is technically out of board jurisdiction, and I'm working on it.
Okay.
I'm discussing it with code enforcement, Michael Chee is on speed dial, because the neighbor keeps calling.
Wow, okay.
I mean, the garage does say no habitable space in the C of O.
I'm sorry, Brian?
The C of O says no habitable space in the garage?
On the second floor.
Okay.
The old zoning board decision specifically said no habitable space on the second floor. There is no second floor.
It says no habitable space?
No, correct.
Or, or...
Yes.
Second floor without approval, so it doesn't say no habitable space except for the second floor.
I can't apply, I can't apply yet until I have health department. In a detached accessory, I need health department approval first before building department will accept an application. That's just the rules. I can't apply yet. I need the sanitary system permit. But I will, I'm working on it.
And another thing I wanted to mention, you know, if we waited three months for the survey, you know, with the actual, you know, sanitary system put in, well, the shed's going to be there for the next three months anyway, far as I know, so we could just, you know, wait.
That's what I mean. It's not like they're holding up anything.
Right, right. So...
So, I'm having a little trouble hearing down here, but is the idea that the applicant's going to come back and show movement towards the house for the shed, and what the cost would be to do that? Is that what you're also saying?
The board has asked me for an estimate to move the shed, how much it would cost. The board has asked to know who the contractor was for their own information and everyone else's. And the board asked if I was going to show the sanitary system as a reason why I can't move the shed, that that sanitary system be placed on the survey, or at least on a site plan prepared by a licensed engineer, and that licensed engineer has been retained as Paul Dealandro Andrews.
Is it your understanding that if you place the sanitary system where you suggested on this, that you will not be able to move the shed?
Not towards the road, not towards inlet road, no. Towards North Beach Road, hey, go crazy if you want me to move it closer.
But could you move it, I'm sorry, could you move it closer to the house?
I might be able to move it closer to the house.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
But if I did, if I poured a slab, there is a fluted trunk red maple system. So the root system actually goes over the surface rather than down in the ground, and that root system, if I poured a slab and I moved it closer to the house, would eventually be compromised, because the roots will come up through the concrete and buckle it and compromise the slab.
Is it my understanding that there's a driveway there now, on top of the root system of the maple?
There's no driveway, it's all gravel.
Gravel.
It's pavers and gravel.
There's gravel on top.
It's gravel.
Yep.
It's pavers and, there's a paver walkway, and there's gravel, it's all gravel, he doesn't even have grass.
Yeah, and Susan, that, the tree may be gone anyway because of the new septic system. It may not make it through...
Right.
...installation of the septic system, so I don't know that we can base where we locate the shed, or approve the shed to be located on the tree, because the tree probably is, unfortunately, its days are numbered, I would say.
It's possible.
Yeah.
The new sanitary will compromise the tree. It is possible.
Yeah, no, I also want to mention that in normal circumstances, if we had a contractor doing this and we knew who it was, we would be asking you to bring that contractor in to explain what happened. I'm not sure whether other board members are about this, but I wanted to mention that as well, that that's what we would typically do.
I'd like to speak to you.
Sure.
I came to see the shed yesterday. I have your phone.
Helen needs the microphone next to her.
It's a beautiful property, he did a really good job. He has a beautiful property.
It's a beautiful, it's so small.
It's stunning.
I couldn't even think of moving that shed an inch. The house is a one-bedroom house.
Yes, it's a very small house. He needs the space.
Everything there is so small.
Yeah.
And I just, I have no problem with this application, and I think it's just, it's just been done in a beautiful, beautiful way.
Right, the shed's kind of tucked back into the trees, so you can't even see it, like it's very tastefully done, the whole property.
It was done without a building permit for the shed.
Yes, sir.
That's a bit of a problem.
Tastefully done without a building permit.
Well, that's a bit of a problem. Contractors should know better. I mean, it's one thing for property owners to do something like this, but for a contractor, particularly a contractor that turns out to be someone who's licensed in the town of Southampton, to have...
I don't know.
Well, to have done this, it's just not to be taken lightly. Yes, it's just a shed, it's not a house, who knows what this contractor has done elsewhere?
Adam wants his opportunity at public flogging.
Right, I usually take the public flogging for everybody.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, if it were a normal circumstance where, you know, the applicant says, "Well, the contractor said, I did this," we'd say, "Okay, bring the contractor in, let's find out what happened." But we, you know, don't really even have, we don't have the name of the contractor tonight. I don't know where the rest of the board is on this, I'm just mentioning that I, you know...
I would like to hear from the rest of the board, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just think, again, that it's almost much to do about very little. I mean, we've had so many cases where people have built houses...
I know, bigger fish.
Without permit. And here's this miniscule shed, really, and to think that this is so much that's being said about it, I don't, I don't agree with it.
Like I said, in...
I don't agree with it.
In normal circumstances...
Nothing's being said is different than other applications with Aspil.
Oh, I completely agree.
Nothing's been different than this application than other Aspils at all.
But in normal circumstances, if the shed were a little bit smaller, it would be able to be placed 10 feet to the side and rear, and it completely conforms with that ideal, so, you know, that is what I'm really sticking with.
Do you have a con-board permit? I know you said Marty was okay with it, but do you have a permit or a jurisdiction?
I have a recent letter from Marty saying, "I have an amended administrative wetlands permit with a cover letter stating that please just modify the permit to include the shed." I'll give it to you.
All right, let's move on. Yep, I think so.
You moving?
We'll be moving in a second.
All right.
Just, okay.
I don't have a problem with the shed right now.
Well, this is from 2014.
I would rather see an improved septic system there and save the tree, that's what I'm looking for.
Well, the tree may not be saved, but that's all right.
Whatever.
Okay, any other comments?
I gave you the...
Okay. And Agina, whenever you're done, I want to see if there's anyone from the public.
Okay, let's see if anyone's...
Okay, all right. Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Manani? This is for property located at 95 Inlet Road West in Schinacock Hills.
Nobody? Okay, Helen?
Okay.
Just submit it later, Agina.
I'll give you a copy of the admin permit that was renewed with the cover letter stating, "Please modify it to include the shed," but he had no problem with it.
Okay, all right. Helen, it's yours.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We'll lose it open for written submissions.
It's written here, huh?
Written submissions till October 1st.
Okay.
And we'll have a decision on October 21st.
Okay, and I will get you, both of you, that recent letter from Marty. I'm just escaping right now.
Okay, all right.
And other people are online.
We'll see. Okay, thank you. We have a second on the motion.
Second.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
As long as the chair is okay, I'm all right.
All right. Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Curran.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Agina.
Okay, we're down to item 5 on the agenda, which is Brian O'Sullivan, 32 Cove Road in North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-61-1-44. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code. One, for the proposed garage with porch addition to the existing dwelling on a non-conforming lot. 330-11 Residential District Stable of Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback of 40 feet, where 60 feet is required from the northerly property line Cove Road, and a principal front yard setback of 56.2 feet, where 60 feet is required from the westley property line Waters Edge Road. Two, for the proposed swimming pool, 330-11, for an accessory side yard setback of 16 feet, where 20 feet is required, and an accessory distance from street setback, front yard of 58.4 feet, where 70 feet is required from the westley property line Waters Edge Road. And two, 330-76D Placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and 330-83C yards to allow the swimming pool to be located within the required minimum side yard for the principal building. And three, for the proposed porch addition to the existing dwelling Cove Road, 330-11 Residential District Stable of Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback of 57 feet plus or minus, where 60 feet is required. And four, to legalize a wood deck constructed in the south side of the building without the benefit of a building permit. 330-11 for an accessory side yard setback of 5 feet, where 20 feet is required. And two, 330-76D Placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and 330-83C yards to allow the deck to remain within the required minimum side yard for the principal building, and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction. Mr. O'Sullivan, you can come up, yep, I know Candace is looking for Carl.
Tell him to come back in November. No, Mr. Kelly.
I'd like to wait for Carl to represent, but...
I understand, but if he's not available, if he left, or, you know, isn't able to come in a minute or two, we may have to second call.
I think Candace went to get him. Why don't you just start telling the board about your property?
Sure.
I'd like to square you in first, if you could stick your name and address, please.
Brian O'Sullivan, 32 Cove Road.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Brian O'Sullivan, 32 Cove Road.
Okay, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, well, your attorney's here, so you're off the hook.
Susan, sorry, the door locks.
Oh, you were having problems with that, yeah.
Candace saved me, my apologies.
Wow. And then... That was intentional, Mr. Benacosa. Carl, we're ready for you. We locked that door on purpose for you. We just wanted to see how you'd respond.
Good to see you all. This is a variance, we're asking for enumerated relief on 32 Cove Road, which is located in the Southampton Cove subdivision. Little history of that subdivision, it was subdivided in 1950 before zoning and has experienced several upzones. Currently, it's zoned R40, which puts some burdens on the property as the majority of homes are 25,000 square, the parcels are 25,000 square feet and below. Because of that, you've actually seen a lot of work from this subdivision, I'm sure you're familiar with it. This specific lot is located on a corner with, and because of that, not only is it undersized, it's 25,000 square feet, it has three front yards, so it's exceedingly burdened. As a result, any development is likely going to need, any development which would be available to most lots would need a variance, which is why Mr. O'Sullivan is here today. Mr. O'Sullivan brought the application on his own to this point, and because of that, I may defer to him if there's specific questions. He just asked me to come stand in for him at the hearing, which I almost did. Looking around the property, I think.
Carl, you just have to watch with the microphone, maybe you want to take it out.
Looking around the property, the first, obviously, the first apparent request for relief we're looking for is in the front yard, and this is actually the point where we're asking for the most relief. The existing home is located 63.8 feet from the, from the front yard line, which is conforming. The applicants are requesting the addition of a front yard porch, which would be 57.7 feet from the property line, a variance request of 2.3 feet. And then most encumbering would be the addition of the proposed garage, which is 40 feet from the front yard line on Cove Road, 58.6 feet, and 58.6 feet from the front yard line on Waters Edge. So we're asking relief there off of Cove in the amount of 20 feet, and off of Waters Edge in the amount of 1.4 feet. Addressing the relief off of Cove, obviously 20 feet is a considerable variance, I would direct the board's attention across the street to a variance that was issued recently on 22 Cove, 22 Cove Road, literally right across the street. There, there was a variance granted, it's variance number D017004. It was issued by this board in January of 2017, and what it did was grant relief for a pool, which is an accessory structure requiring a 70-foot setback under the R40 to 30 feet. So, a significant variance was granted across the street. In addition, the home, although existing by nonconformity, pre-existing nonconformity, is itself only 30 feet from the, from the front yard. Again, drawing to the home directly adjacent to the south, that address is 5 Knoll Road. You'll note that they have a garage on that property, which is only 43.6 feet from the, attached to the principal dwelling, which is only 43.6 feet from the front yard. So again, very much in line with the character of the neighborhood. These are the two variances I pulled from properties directly abutting this parcel. There are many examples throughout this community of such variances. So again, that addresses the yard, the porch, which we're asking for a variance of 2.3 feet, the garage, which off of Cove Road, a variance of 20 feet, and off of Waters Edge, a variance of 1.4 feet. Off the side of the garage is a small porch. That porch is going to be used in conjunction with the pool, which I'll talk about next, as a cabana and storage area. The porch itself is 56.2 feet off of Waters Edge, again, so for that, we would need a 3.8-foot variance for the porch. The pool is an accessory structure. As a result, as an accessory structure setback from the front yard in an R40, it would need 70 feet. We are asking for a distance of 58.4 feet, or 12.6 feet, oh, I'm sorry, 11.6 feet in relief from the permitted setback for the accessory structure. Again, directly across the street, this board granted a variance for a pool of similar size to be 40 feet in relief, and we are asking for 11.6. Turning to the back of the home, there is a wood deck that is existing, and we are seeking to legalize. The home was built as a, it's an existing nonconformity. Again, it was built when this was C-zone, which is akin to R20, and when it became R40, there was existing nonconforming setbacks of 18.4 feet off the side yard. As you know, in an R40, 20 feet off the side is the minimum side yard setback. The existing deck is 4.3 feet off of the side yard. Now, there's a few things to consider here. One, the neighbor most affected, that's 5 Knoll Road.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
5 Knoll Road is the neighbor most affected by that, this relief, it's the neighbor directly to the south of this property, has a variance that was granted some time ago in 86, subsequent to the last upzoning, which allowed this parcel to have R15 zoning. So, as a result, the side yard is 15 feet that's permitted in the adjoining lot. Moreover, so this relief is not as drastic when you consider what he's permitted on his lot. Moreover, my client is very familiar with this individual, and he has expressed support to him for the variance.
Who built the wood deck?
He did.
Okay, then we're gonna have to talk to him.
Okay.
Okay.
When you're done.
Additionally, although not advertised, there was a miscommunication at some point during the process, there is a bit of pyramid relief that's required. The proposed additions will call for two dormers, and although, again, it's not advertised, we're hoping that the board would consider this portion of the application under the, and any further relief deemed necessary by the board, portion of the advertisement. Do you have the pyramid calculation? So there are two dormers that are proposed on the south side of the home, and I believe these plans were submitted earlier today, they're updated. They are stamped plans by the engineer, and they show that the dormers require 75 cubic feet in pyramid relief. So a relatively minor degree of cubic, of pyramid relief in the grand scheme. And those are the, those are the requests for relief that we're making today.
For the pyramid, that would be for what, a proposed one-story addition? What is it?
Just the dormers, oh, and the one-story addition, yeah, they're adding a second story, that's right, and just the dormers of that second story.
So we have, do we have an idea of the amount of pyramid relief altogether? Or you might have mentioned.
Total is 75.
75.
Cubic feet, excuse me.
75.
75 cubic feet, sorry.
Okay, wow, that's a lot of relief.
It's relatively minor, yes.
Okay, all right.
There is a, and I just want to mention this about the wooden deck, down the street at 36 Waters Edge, there is, oh, I'm sorry, that's the wrong address. At 40 Waters Edge, excuse me, there's a home that exists with a deck that's one foot, a wooden deck that's one foot from the prop, from the side yard. So there is examples in this area of homes with such.
Does that have a variance?
No, no variance.
I see.
Pre-existing.
Okay, pre-existing, okay.
I'm just saying, for the character of the community, such structures do exist.
Okay. All right, well, I for one just would like to hear from the applicant just about the facts and circumstances related to the wood deck being constructed without a permit.
Sure.
Okay, if you can just tell us how it transpired that the wood deck went up without a permit?
Sure. So, as you can see, I have three fronts, so the house really only has, really has no backyard, all right, so the only private area we have in our home is that area. When I bought the house, it had a small existing patio, and, you know, I'm in the trade, so I'm in, involved in a lot of building sites, and I see a lot of stuff that happens, and I talk to a lot of contractors. And I was under the impression at that time that if I were to build a deck that was within 12 inches from grade, that it was considered a patio. Now, apparently, that's false information, but under, I thought that was the case, and, you know, instead of barbecuing in my grass, I built a deck, you know, that is within 12 inches of grade, but I believe, as I understand it today, that does not classify as patio and still does need a building permit, and in which, in this case, perhaps a variance. So, I apologize.
Okay, well, and I appreciate that, we just, you know, when there are Asbils structures, whenever possible, we want to know, you know, how that transpired, only because we have too many Asbils that go on, and, you know, and if you're in the business especially, and you have a doubt, a doubt or a question as to whether you need a permit or not, always better to contact the billing department and find out, but I appreciate the fact that you're hearing and trying to rectify it.
Sure, thanks.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. Any other questions, members of the board?
I actually went to see the property. It has some challenges. I mean, it has topography challenges, there's a big dip on the one side, I guess it's on the Waters Edge side of the property.
On the west side, yes.
Right. And that's where you plan to put the pool?
Yes.
So how are you going to accommodate that, it looks like a four-foot drop?
In fact, the pool is more set toward the back end, and the front end is where it drops off, the front corner, I guess the northwest corner is where it drops off the most. So towards the back, it rises, really, it rises all the way back towards the south property line. So, there's area up there, and actually, the whole creation of what I've drawn up here is trying to work with that slope in a way that I can create that backyard space that I lack, right, and hence, pushing up the garage to create a privacy area towards the back. But I'm well within, I'm not off of that, as you can see, I think it's like seven feet above grade or above, you know, sea level, right, at that point. So it's actually at a higher point where it's already, and in, in laying out the foundations, it will create a, an area in which the pool, it's actually already there, it's, it actually works pretty well. I spent a lot of time walking the property, measuring the property, you know, understanding the elevations in order to get this to work. It's one of the reasons I had to poke over that, you know, the house exists so far to the back of the property line that it's hard to go up at all with the pyramid. I was able to do it by going down and creating a split level.
Can I ask you a question about the deck, which is very close to that fence? I mean, it is really right on top of the fence, and your neighbor on the other side is a much, you know, more extensive setback from that side yard with trees that he's planted. You said you were concerned about privacy, and that's why you put the deck in. With the new pool construction and stuff like that, would you be able to accommodate your privacy needs and not use that deck?
It helps to give more of an area, for sure. Where the deck is, this lot behind us, Steve Prisby, friendly, you know, great guy, beautiful house, but that was just built, we had all the privacy we ever wanted on that back deck before because there was nothing there, right? And so, honestly, after the property sold and the house was built, what once was, was not anymore, and it's not to anybody's, you know, fault, but we're trying to create a space more away from each other.
Well, I'm just asking whether, you know, in terms of whether we grant the variance on the deck, whether we do that or not, based on the fact that you are trying to come up with alternatives to that?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
You know, you've got the deck there, and you said it was for privacy reasons that you had it and you needed to, but I'm just saying, it's very close to the fence, and can you get your privacy needs met through the accommodations around the new pool construction?
Certainly, I'm going to have more privacy area over here, and so it's not as necessary as it once was, yes. You know, it is built at this point, and of course, I understand I did it incorrectly, and if I have to remove it, I have to remove it, but I hope to keep it.
Okay.
And speaking of the deck, I would like to get an estimate as to what the financial hardship would be on the applicant if the deck were to be removed, or removed or moved to a conforming location, I should say.
Certainly.
Okay. Not because we're saying you're gonna have to remove it, but we need it as part of the record.
I can see why you'd like that information.
Okay, which is consistent, again, with what we do with Asbils.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions, members of the board, or Katie?
I really don't have an issue with the requested relief. I'm looking at the pool, it's 15 by, I think, 25 feet.
It's a small pool.
Small pool, yeah, you didn't try to overdo it, and it's got a lot of constraints, you know, fronts, three roads, and I don't think you're asking for too much, so I don't have an issue with it.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of O'Sullivan? This is for property located at 132 Cove Road in North Sea. If not, Susan, it's yours.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, 32 Cove Road, North Sea, not 132.
So I move to, to have written submissions due on October 1st with the decision on October 21st.
Second.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair of the House. Thank you for being here.
Good to see you all.
You too.
See you on Zoom.
Thank you.
Okay, re-advertised applications. Item six is Thomas and Eva DeVito, 129 Shore Road in North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map
You have to read it.
Yes, ma'am. The number's shadowed, thank you.
I know, sorry.
We have to read it, so we'll just be a second.
No worries.
Appropriate request for relief from the following provisions of the town code for a proposed three-story dwelling, 330-11 residential district stable of dimension regulations for a proposed. Three-story dwelling, sorry, doesn't say it there, but, and, for a proposed required rail-out setback of 20.3 feet where 30 feet is required. Two, 330-11 to allow the proposed dwelling to be three stories where maximum two stories is permitted. And three, 330-84D pyramid height law for a proposed encroachment in the amount of 1,621 cubic feet, 940 cubic feet on the south side, and 535 cubic feet on the north side, and 146 cubic feet on the east side, and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Good evening. I know in my notes I previously saw you, and Katie, on a re-add, do I need to swear Sean in again?
Can't hurt.
Okay, all right. Sean, if you can state your name and address, please.
Sean Barron, 124 Pleasure Drive, Flanders, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing about the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you can tell us where we are with the application.
So basically, the reverb in here is insane. This is a re-application, we had a hearing previously several months ago, we closed the hearing.
Yeah, if you want to just lift it up.
Do I get to walk around?
There we go, that's better.
We had, this is basically, we closed the public hearing last, last time it was heard with the caveat that if we needed a relief for a third story, that we would have to reopen and re-advertize the hearing. So that's basically what was determined. It is considered a three-story, so we were back for a variance relief for the third story in addition to the pyramid.
Explain to us what the, how they're considering it a three-story for the record.
Oh, that's for the building department, I mean, that's, it's new to me, previously, it's stuff like this, when in a flood zone, they've reinterpreted the law, but so now it's considered a three-story dwelling. But so now, it's considered a three-story dwelling. Full disclosure, they made it three stories now too. Since we're getting the variance, they added a little more height. That's why you'll notice the pyramid relief is a little bit more than it previously was. It's still very minor as far as pyramid variances go.
What's on the first floor?
What's that?
What's on the first floor?
That's likely why it's considered a three-story. If there was just minimal space on the first floor enough to elevate the house, it wouldn't be considered a story. So, I don't think it's a new interpretation.
Okay.
So, you know, definitely we want to know what's on each floor, particularly if we're going to have living space on each of the three floors.
Entry, entry and storage and garage.
First floor is...
There's been some resubmitted plans that you all have, but the lower-level plan shows a garage, 16 by 22.
Okay.
An entry that just goes upstairs, basically, looks like a kind of an inside foyer.
Okay.
And then entry and storage.
Okay, so the first floor is not habitable living space, correct?
Correct.
And you're going to be installing sprinkler system since you have to?
Right, I think, I thought that was the impetus for the whole, the whole third-story thing, but yes.
Oh, yeah, it's required. I'm not even sure if that submission is new, Brian, I just grabbed it. Sure, sure. Yeah, okay, all right. So, but other than the fact that it's being, that it's required to have relief as a three-story dwelling, and the pyramid has changed slightly, the application is otherwise basically the same?
Correct.
Just explain why the house is being elevated, just to refresh the record.
To make that lower level more usable, since we're going for that third-story relief anyway.
No, but you were lifting the house anyway because of FEMA flooding.
Oh, correct, well, yeah, basically, it's in a flood zone, they were knocking it down, they had to, they had to make it, they had to elevate to comply with FEMA, add some freeboard. We had to go through the whole rigmarole with the conservation board. We moved, we moved back a little bit, but there's no further encroachment on the wetlands, got the DEC, got the town permits. This is just the last step.
Is it just complying with FEMA or is it higher than FEMA requires?
It's now higher because it's the third floor anyway, so it sounds like...
I mean, yeah, the freeboard is already above the FEMA requirement anyway.
Okay, okay.
What's the new pyramid relief, what's the new cubic footage?
We have to get you on the microphone.
Yeah, no, no. I gotta get the page back. You wear glasses. The new total, the new total is 1621 cubic feet, 940 on the south, 535 on the north, and 146 on the east. And then, previously, the north was, the north hasn't changed, the north was 535, it's, wait a second.
Okay, so we're still talking about modest pyramid relief?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, still not a lot of pyramid at all.
Okay.
1621.
Yeah. And the fact that, you know, the first story is not how do a living space means something to me because, well, we generally, you know, have properties in the town be limited to two stories. When they're three stories, sometimes it's because of unique circumstances. And as long as we're not having three stories of habitable living space, I'm okay with it. Just speaking for myself.
Agreed. When it's FEMA-driven, we generally are okay with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Would the owners have an issue if we conditioned our, having variance granted with no habitable space on the first floor?
Would you have an issue if we added a condition into any variance if we were to grant it, that there be no habitable space allowed on the first floor?
And we need to swear you in and have you go on the microphone if you'd like to speak.
I'm judging by the head nods that they're okay with that.
The head nods are okay? All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, well, thank you. Okay, any other questions, members of the board, or Katie? Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of DeVito? This is for property located at 129 Shore Road in North Sea. One other thing I forgot to ask you, Shawn, have you heard from any of the neighbors?
There was some discussion between one of the neighbors to the south. It wasn't really germane to the variance, but there was a modification made to the driveway, actually, so that the revised plan reflects that the parking area on the west side of the dwelling is now, now doesn't pass the plane of the house toward the water. Previously, it did.
Okay.
But that was just working with the neighbors, but again, not really germane to the variance per se.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, since we don't have any comments from the public, Cornelius, it is yours.
Moves to close the public hearing, leaving open for written submissions only until October 1st with a written decision on October 21st.
Second. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
And Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Chair of the side, thank you for being here.
Thanks for your time.
Have a good rest of your night.
Likewise.
Go ahead.
Sure. Number 10, 1201 Noack Road LLC, property located Suffolk County Tax Map 900-42-3-51. Property is located at 18 Kendall's Lane, and this is held over from the May 6th, June 3rd, July 15th, August 19th.
Good evening.
You might want to tip, tip the microphone or actually just grab it if you, whatever you want to do.
I don't know if I'm coordinating enough. Hi, this is Kiran Pate Murfree for the applicant. The reason for the delay is I couldn't get the surveyor to go out to the site. So, so I, you know, I, there was a lot of begging, but...
Just making the record, I wasn't implying anything on that.
Yeah, whatever, but anyhow, it was no, you know, so anyhow, Inspector Riley had some additional information she wanted, so that's what took some time. The main thing was that there wasn't anything about the pyramid height and the oval height. So, and she gave very specific instructions about that. So, this is Squires and Holden in Southampton, it's been around, I think, for 100 years. They're very familiar with it. They did do a pyramid diagram on this and found that there is only 40 cubic feet outside of, you know, outside of the pyramid that is required. So, that was information that wasn't given when it was first submitted because the main variances were about the setback along the Noack Road because this is an old 1700 house that was added on to. So, anyhow, we got that updated, so that takes care of our first issue. The second issue was the amount of square footage of the tennis court. That was not done. And I just asked that, I mean, it is, there is a swimming pool there, it is going to be on the, it's 110 by 55 feet, that maybe you could waive that requirement because it's in the front yard. I mean, it's going to be referenced and this way I don't have to, you know, go back to the surveyor.
Hold on, can you repeat that?
Maybe they're going to have to list it as 55 by 110.
Yeah.
They didn't list the dimensions of the tennis court.
She wanted, she wanted the, we have the amount of the square footage, but we don't have how much is encroaching into the required front yard. It just, it wasn't done.
Yeah, so I look at it, the survey doesn't show the size of the tennis court.
It is 110 by 55.
I think we're going to need that noted on there.
Do you want that put on?
I think we have, yeah.
We do.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, the surveyor should just be able to do that pretty easily, I would hope.
Yes, yes.
He doesn't have to go out, we just need to...
Yeah, no, we're just trying to...
I understand.
I can get that done.
Okay.
I can beg and get that done because it doesn't require any, you know, site visits or whatever, so anyhow, all right.
The surveyor's been there a couple of times already, so...
Yeah, so, okay, so...
The board's not going to, if Marge is suggesting that something needs to be done, it's got to be done. The board's not going to waive her notes.
Okay.
I mean, back in April 19...
I can ask.
Because they're going to bounce it in the billing department anyway, you know, so...
Okay, so I will, I will get that on if you allow me to, you know, maybe leave the record open for that.
Yeah, that's the reason we ask, because otherwise, you know, you're going to have to do it, you know, do it sooner or later, so may as well get it done now. So, whatever it is that the department wants.
But anyhow, I'm just, I'm telling you what happened and I just didn't want to adjourn it again.
I understand.
Okay, so we're so close here. Okay, so I'll get that done. The amount of square footage of the patio around the swimming pool that is encroaching in required side yard, that has been eliminated. If you look direction-wise, the pool does not have that one section of patio, the 55-foot wide and the 16-foot wide because in our 40, you need to have 20-foot setback. The pool is exactly 20 feet setback, so we don't need that, that, we don't need the amount of square footage around the swimming pool that is encroaching into the required side yard because it's been eliminated.
Okay.
Okay, and then the last thing was the right-of-way, which is now Kendall's Lane. And those were the, in her comments that she submitted, that's everything except for the mistake with the tennis court, which if you allow the records to stay open, just for a week or so, I can get that done.
Okay.
So, anyhow, that's basically, you know, hopefully I answered all the questions, so...
Okay, okay, all right. Yeah, so we're going to be, what we're doing is we're holding, we're closing public hearings for written subs until October 1st.
Okay.
So, that would give you a couple of weeks.
I can do this. I know I can, I can get this.
Okay, and if it turns out that you don't have it by then, just let Candace know and we'll, you know, we'll deal with that.
Okay, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Okay.
So then, okay, all right, so...
Yep, if anybody's here. Yep, any other questions, members of the board?
Was there an issue about drainage for the right of...
Um, yes.
Onto Kendall, and how has that been resolved?
Okay, so I did talk to the town engineer because I know Mr. Clare was very interested in that. They did put drainage at the end of the, of the road there, but this is in the stormwater district and in talking to him, everything has to be contained on site. And he said there wasn't an issue. And also, it's at New York State Building Code, so they have to comply. There's no, you know, request for variances or anything, that's just, you know, the neighbor being in the business of, or retired from that, but that's not something. And he was okay with that, okay with that. But I wanted for my own, you know, education and, and he said it is okay. But, you know, they have to pass final inspections and get that all done, which they have to comply with state law and they're in the stormwater area, so there's, you know, it's black, you know, it's black and white, it's whatever, so...
So, the water has to retain, be retained on property and that's part of it?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Is there anyone from the public waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of 1201 Noack LLC? This is for property located at 18 Kendall's Lane in Southampton. If not, Mike, it is yours.
Okay, so it looks like we need, we need some additional notes on the survey, but otherwise, we'll leave this open for written submissions until October 1st and there will be a decision on, what day does that...
21st, October 21st.
21st of October.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair of the side, have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.
Item 11 is Greg and Michelle Favor, 6 Wells Lane, Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm doing all right. I'm, I think I previously swore you in on this one, Kevin.
Yes, you have.
Okay, so you're still sworn in.
Okay. The board had asked, well, the last time I was here, for two additions to the survey. One was the front yard setback for the front porch, which is exactly what we had described as 36-4. And the bigger thing was the rear yard, rear lot yard coverage with the proposed pool, which if you can see, I think everybody should have that survey by now, came in at 19.6% just under the 20%. And I don't think we had any other issues that I'm aware of.
I'm sorry, what was the rear yard coverage again?
That's rear or total?
That's rear lot yard coverage. That's what the board had asked for.
Right. And I think we probably talked about it last time, but you can, can you refresh my memory on the roof over front entrance constructed without a building permit, how that transpired?
Somewhere in the early mid to 90s, somewhere around 93, 94, two owners ago.
Wow.
And unfortunately, nobody, these are brand-new owners who had purchased it this way, along with the actual back, what they consider a patio now, which is a little...
So, we have no way of knowing, you know, anything about how that transpired a long time ago? Yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions, members of the board?
I do, because I don't have my application, Kevin. So, what, what is, what is the total lot coverage?
I believe 15.5%.
Okay, so you don't need a variance for that? We advertised that?
Right, yes, we do not need a variance for that and we do not need it for the rear lot yard either. But we do need it for the 36-4 for the front porch.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Favor? This is for property located at 8 Wells Lane in Hampton Bays. If not, Susan, it's yours.
Okay, so I move that we close the public hearing and written submissions October 1st per decision on October 21st.
Second.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that last date?
10/21.
October 21st.
That's, that's the decision, 10/21?
Okay. And Mike, did you do the second?
No, that was Brian.
That was Brian, okay. All right, Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair of the side, thank you for being here, Kevin. Have a good rest of your night.
Item 12 on the agenda is Amelia Rose, 872 Millstone Avenue Road in West Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-16-20.26. The public hearing for this application was closed on August 5, 2021, but the record was left open for written submissions by August 20, 2021. By letter dated September 15, 2021, Timothy McCully states as the attorney for the applicant, he has no objection to the board reopening this hearing for additional testimony.
Okay, so as you guys remember, Mr. McCully was here, he gave testimony in reviewing the application, at least two, maybe three of the board members had suggested to me that they wanted more information. I mentioned this to Mr. McCully, he has, you know, he has no objection to us reopening it, although, once you reopen it, he would like a little guidance, so if anybody can think of anything specific, just state it for the record and I can communicate it to him.
Okay, well, after we do the motion to reopen, we'll do that. Okay, so, so do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, and actually, I keep...
I'll second it.
Okay, so Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?[1760.82] Chair of us, aye, we're reopened. And so the reason that we reopen this application is because there were two different public hearings. The first public hearing was by Karen Pate Murfree, and then the second public hearing was with Tim McCully. And the two presentations were remarkably different from one another. And we asked Mr. McCully at the end of the second public hearing to submit something, you know, about the changed testimony in the first presentation versus the second presentation. We didn't receive anything on that, and that's the reason, from my perspective, that we want to get more testimony, is to get an explanation as to, you know, what transpired there in terms of the two different attorneys giving presentations that raised different points in connection with this application.
Does anyone else want anything else clarified?
I think we should have a timeline of what permits were actually obtained in comparison to what work was actually done, because I think that was the difference between the first presentation and the second presentation. The first presentation, I was under the impression that these things were done without permits. I think Mr. McCully's presentation indicated they were done with permits, but I haven't seen any permits or the timeline in which permits may or may not have been issued for work that was done.
So between these two things, we'd be cleaning up the record quite a bit?
Yes.
Okay, then I would recommend you ask him to come back the next meeting to give you some more information on that.
I agree.
Okay, so-
We have room on the next meeting?
We do. Not for much, but we have room for this one. Okay, so I will move that we continue the public hearing for the application of row at our October seventh meeting.
Second.
Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Chair of us, aye.
We'll see him on the seventh.
Yep. And hopefully he'll know what we're looking for.
Is anybody waiting on a specific decision that's here?
Are you guys, are you waiting or- Okay. Come on up. So you're not here for a particular application?
No, I'm not on the agenda. I'm in the, I just began the process of getting a variance. I put in my application about a month and a half ago.
Okay.
I expedited my building permit, which I've been in the process since December twenty twenty. And I'm doing it myself. I'm a contractor. I'm a pile driver. I wanted to see if, since I expedited my building permit, if I can get my variance expedited, so I can start construction hopefully this winter.
We don't have a expedited variance process?
Yeah, we don't have a process for expediting variances.
No?
No.
But if it's complete, that would expedite it.
Yeah. And as far as when your public hearing, you know, takes place, it's all about the volume that we have, so I don't know whether it's been scut. I don't know which application it is. I don't know whether it's gonna be on the next agenda or the following agenda. But in any case, that's our secretary, Candace Cowell, whom I'm sure you've chatted with already,
What's public, Candace?
Is, you know, it will keep you informed as to, you know, when the application will be on.
Okay.
Yep. And as for the speed at which it occurs, it all depends on what you're asking for and whether there is additional information?
Yeah, it's a non-conforming lot with minimal setbacks on it, yeah.
We'll chat about that more when the time comes.
I just did. I appreciate your time. I know it's a voluntary position. I don't mean to take up your time. I just wanted to see if there was something I could do.
That's okay.
All right, guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a good night. I have a determination in the matter of Two Rows Court, Southampton LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred, dash one, dash twenty-five point three. We'll read the relief at the end. The premises again is located at Two Rows Court in North Sea. It contains fifty-four thousand four hundred and twenty square feet in the CR two hundred zoning district, benefits from a C of O from May seventeen, May twenty-seventh of twenty sixteen. Linda Riley, attorney for the applicant, appeared seeking a variance because they're converting an existing garage into habitable space to make room for an expanding family and adding a new two-car garage. Ms. Riley explained the premises is located within an old filed map and therefore benefits from reduced setbacks pursuant to Town Code three thirty fifty-five B. It does meet the five-part test. There was no opposition. A neighbor did appear, but it was not in opposition. Type two pursuant to SECR, therefore, for the reasons set forth herein, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. Three thirty fifty-five B, one, transfer of residential development rights procedure for a principal front yard setback of forty-eight point seven feet, where seventy-one point sixty-three feet is permitted, for a proposed two-story garage addition to an existing dwelling, and Town Code three thirty seventy-six D, placement of accessories buildings and structures and uses in all districts, and Town Code Section three thirty eighty-three C yards to legalize the expansion of a slate patio constructed within the total required side yard for the principal building without the benefit of a building permit on the south side of the swimming pool and the south and east sides of the hot tub. These variances are granted for structures as shown on a survey prepared by Ralph Hillel of Meats and Bound Surveying, last revised February tenth of twenty twenty-one, and the plans prepared by Michael Macrinia, R.A., dated April sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. This decision is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including addressing the comments from the building department regarding the outdoor kitchen and overclearing prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance slash occupancy for the project.
Second. Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Chair of us, aye.
Kevin, what are you here for?
Do you want me to do Postma next?
What'd you say?
Sure.
Yep.
I have a determination in the matter of the application of Robert W. Postma and Janet Whelan. The subject premises is located at one forty-one Me Cox Road Watermill, town of Southampton. Property is identified in Suffolk County Tax Map as nine hundred, dash one oh two, dash three, dash fourteen point three nines, approximately twelve, uh, one hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred and eighty-eight square feet in an R twenty zoning district. At the public hearing, Kevin Springer of Dynamic Legal Services appeared on behalf of the applicant, stated that a determination is sought that the proposed accessory building is subordinate or incidental to the main dwelling and its uses as the overall size of the accessory structure is thirty-six percent of the size of the existing dwelling. Owner plans to use the proposed accessory building to meet growing family needs. Property is located on two point eight eight five acres with dense shrubbery bordering all sides. Accessory building is located ninety feet from the front property line and thirty feet from the side property yard. No objections were registered from owners of adjacent properties. So, uh, let's see. Zoning Board of Appeals finds that this request meets the five-part test as set forth in Town Code and New York State law. For the reasons set forth herein, the board finds that the proposed accessory building garage with accessory apartment above is a subordinate or incidental building pursuant to Town Code Section three thirty-five definitions, as the overall size of the proposed accessory building is thirty-six percent of the main dwelling and grants relief from Town Code three thirty, dash eleven point two F, accessory apartment special standards for a principal front yard setback of twenty-six point three feet, where fifty-six feet is required, seventy percent of the required eighty feet for the proposed accessory apartment as shown on the survey prepared by Jeffrey W. Hatterer, last dated August fourth, two thousand twenty-one, and the plans, page eight, one one zero, prepared by Jeffrey Sands, architect, dated January seventh, two thousand twenty-one, received by the ZBA July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, both incorporate herein. Decision is subject to other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including but not limited to accessory apartment application form.
Second. Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Chair of us, aye.
I have a decision in matter of the application of Kimberly McCree, sixteen Columbia Avenue, West Hampton Beach, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred, dash three fifty-four, dash three, dash fifty-seven point one. Applicant requests relief from Town Code three thirty, dash eleven, residential district stable dimensional regulations for accessory distance from street setback, front yard, Fairview Street, of thirty-three point six feet, where fifty feet is required for a proposed twenty by twenty-three garage, and two three thirty, dash seventy-six D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and Town Code three thirty, dash eighty-three C yards to allow the proposed garage to be located within the required front yard of the principal dwelling, Fairview Street. It's a very wonderful written decision. It passes the five-part test. So therefore, this board grants relief from Town Code three thirty, dash eleven, residential district stable dimensional regulations for accessory distance from street setback, front yard, Fairview Street, of thirty-three point six feet, where fifty feet is required for proposed twenty by twenty-three garage, and three thirty, dash seventy-six D, placement of accessory buildings, structures and uses in all districts, and Town Code three thirty, dash eighty-three C yards to allow the proposed garage to be located within the required front yard, the principal dwelling. Fairview Street is shown on a survey prepared by Jeffrey W. Hatterer, Twin Forks Land Surveying, dated April seventeen, twenty-nine, nineteen, last revised July one, twenty twenty-one, and the plans prepared by Ronald C. Anna, architect, last dated June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one. This decision is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including removal of the framed shed as indicated on the aforementioned survey in compliance with the pyramid height regulations as the plans for the proposed garage submitted did not indicate the average natural grade.
Second. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair of us, aye.
I have a determination in the matter of Round Dune Inc., located at one oh one Dune Road in East Quogue, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred, dash three eighty-five, dash two, dash fourteen. The subject premises contains one hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight square feet, is located in the R eighty zoning district, and the VE eighteen flood zone. The premises was acquired by the applicant by deed on August twenty-fourth of nineteen sixty. Type two pursuant to SECR and the relevant provisions of the Town Code. Karen Ho of Tuile Latham and Arum Trachonium of First Coastal Consulting appeared on behalf of the applicant stating that the premises is an improved oceanfront lot that was issued an emergency coastal erosion management permit December of twenty nineteen to install stabilizing geocubes, and that the applicant would like to keep the geocubes in beyond the time allowed pursuant to the permit. Mr. Trachonium testified that the premises boasts four buildings that were constructed in the sixties and contain approximately seventy-two housing units, and they're well, at the time, they were built well over a hundred feet from the dune. Mr. Trachonium explained that the dune has eroded, caused by factors beyond the applicant's control, and tried to the erection of jetties on Chinookock Inlet in the sixties. The board is in receipt of a letter from December sixteenth of twenty twenty for the Suffolk County Planning Commission, noting that the application is a decision of local determination. I'm summarizing this. Board is in, many people appeared, both for and against the application. Kevin McAllister of Defend H two O submitted an email in opposition to the application that the geocubes should be removed, as they were classified as shorebreaking structures. Jeanne Rigdon appeared, that she was the original agent. There's an extensive discussion that is outlined here. But skipping to the conclusion, therefore, for the reasons set forth herein, this board grants relief from Town Code Section one thirty-eight twenty G, notification of administrator, and Town Code Section one thirty-eight twenty H, removal to allow existing geocubes that were installed pursuant to an emergency coastal erosion management permit, CE, I'm sorry, ECE one nine zero zero one, issued December fifth of twenty nineteen to remain in the subject premises until the completion of the FIMP project, or December thirty-one of twenty twenty-three, whichever is earlier, as shown on the survey prepared by John T. Messenger, Land Surveyor of Beconic Surveying, last revised June twenty-fourth of twenty twenty, subject to the following. One, applicant and all successors in interest and assigns agree to allow for an annual inspection of the premises by the Environmental Division in order to determine whether the geocubes have become exposed and whether there is a need to complete beach and dune renourishment, subject to obtaining a new CEHA permit. Two, applicant and all successors and interests and assigns agree to increase the dune height and width, as well as re-vegetate the dune, as may be directed by the Environmental Division. Three, should there be erosion on the dune, the dynamic beach conditions at Round Dune that create significant exposure of the geocubes that cannot be remediated through the dune restoration slash renourishment, they may be ordered removed at the owner's full expense by the Coastal Erosion Hazard Administrator. The aforementioned will also be memorialized in a covenant, subject to approval by the town attorney's office, which shall be filed against the premises in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk by December sixteenth of twenty twenty-one. Further, all other conditions of emergency coastal management permit, ECE one nine zero zero one, remain in full force and effect. Granted, the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval.
Second. Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Mr. Tudhill.
No.
Chair of us, aye. I have a determination in the matter of the application of Harvey Herman. This is for property located at one forty-six Red Creek Road in Hampton Bays, tax number nine hundred, one twenty-six, three five. Applicant requests relief from, well, I'll let, we'll do the relief at the end. The property is in the R forty zoning district. The premises has a pre-existing C of. We have comments from the building department on the application. Testimony from the applicant and his architect, August Muth, was that they seek variances to construct in addition to the existing dwelling that will serve as an artist studio and storage, and also to legalize an outdoor shower and sunroom. Mr. Herman testified that he is an artist who teaches classes at the library and shows his art locally. He explained that he and his wife have lived in the dwelling for sixteen years, and that as they are aging, he is eighty-eight years old, and his wife is ninety years old, they find it difficult to reach the second floor to use the studio. As such, he stated that he proposes to move the studio from the second floor of the dwelling to a new space on the first floor to make it easier to access. He also testified that he enclosed an existing deck to construct the sunroom approximately fifteen years ago, not realizing that required a permit, and that the fencing and outdoor shower existed at the time that they purchased the premises. Mr. Muth testified on behalf of the applicant that this property is double the size required in this zoning district, and that it is also heavily wooded, making it unlikely that the proposed addition will have any impact on the neighborhood. He also noted that the premises is burdened by two front yards, and that the interior layout of the floor plan of the existing dwelling does not allow for the addition to be built on any of the other three sides, and that the addition is close to the main entrance to the house. He explained that the owners are mobility impaired and can no longer climb stairs to get to the second floor where the studio currently is located. David Kirst of Matthews Kirst and Cooley, P L L C, appeared on behalf of the neighbors, Amy Feldman, Edward and Eileen McGinty, Jilla Kaplan, Beverly Gross, Ola Anderson, and Veronica Stolt, and Frank and Elizabeth Marada, in opposition to the proposed addition, stating that it is too close to the road and his client's properties. He added that his clients all collectively owned the fee to Gathering Rocks Road and object only to the addition proposed so close to the road, and not to the outdoor shower or sunroom. He stated that there were alternatives to the proposed location of the studio as the existing dwelling already benefits from a non-conforming setback, and that constructing in addition to the dwelling presents an undue burden in the front yard. He added that there are no other structures this close to Gathering Rocks Road, and that the proposal is not consistent with the character of the neighborhood, and that while screening always helps to some degree, the applicant could reduce the size of the addition or reconfigure the plans. And he went on a little bit further, but we'll skip that. Okay, so, um, therefore, actually, let me just read a little bit of, well, this board does not condone construction done without the benefit of a building permit. It does find that the benefits of the application outweighs any perceived detriment to the neighborhood or the community in legalizing the outdoor shower and sunroom, as well as it relates to the proposed addition. Likewise, this board finds that the granting of relief will not cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, nor create a detriment to nearby properties. The property's premises is oversized and heavily wooded, and that basically this application is type two, passes the five-part test, and is not a self-created hardship. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. For a proposed addition, artist studio and storage to an existing dwelling, relief from Town Code three thirty, one fifteen C continuance for a principal front yard setback of twenty point seven feet, where forty-four point three feet is existing, two, to legalize a sunroom that was constructed on an existing deck without the benefit of a building permit, relief from Town Code three thirty, one fifteen C- a building permit, relief from Town Code 33115C for a principal front yard setback of 42.5 feet where 44.3 feet is existing. And three, to legalize an outdoor shower that was constructed without the benefit of a building permit, relief from Town Code 3311, Residential District Stable of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory front yard setback of 49.5 feet where 70 feet is required. These variances are granted for structures as shown in the survey prepared by Alphonse Pesci Jr., last updated May 7, 2021, and the plans prepared by August Henry Muff, last dated August 4, 2021. Granted, this relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including, one, the applicant's removal of all fencing not on the premises, and, two, that any fencing remaining on the premises must be brought into compliance with the Town Code, both prior to the issuance of any certificates for the addition, deck, or shower. Second. Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I have a decision in the matter of the application of Barbara Swislawski, 67 Groves Drive, Flanders, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-144-1-24. Applicant requests a determination as to whether or not the proposed detached garage is a subordinate or incidental building pursuant to Town Code 330-5 definitions because of its size in proportion to the main dwelling and its use. In addition, applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for a proposed detached garage, Town Code 330-84D pyramid height for an encroachment in the amount of 56.7 cubic feet, and two, Town Code 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and Town Code 330-83C yards to, to allow the proposed detached garage to be located within the minimum and total side yard for the principal building. This passes the five-part test. So therefore, for the reasons stated herein, this board finds the applicant's proposed detached garage as a customary accessory structure as it relates to the existing main dwelling on the subject premises. Additionally, the board grants relief for the following provisions of Town Code for a proposed attached garage, 330-84T pyramid height in the amount of 56.7 cubic feet, Town Code 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and Town Code 330-83C yards to allow the proposed detached garage to be located within the minimum and total side yard for the principal dwelling. These variances are granted for structures as shown in survey prepared by Jeffrey Carter, last dated June 18, 2021, and the elevations prepared by Stromsky Architecture, PC, last dated September 13, 2021. This decision is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for the final approval of the subject premises, including compliance with and addressing the Building Department's comments prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance slash occupancy for the proposed garage.
Second. Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Therefore, in the matter of Patrick DePiro and Kristen Berry, subject premises at 42 Tarpon Road, East Quogue, town of Southampton, County of Suffolk, identified as Suffolk County Tax Map 900-362-324, approximately 11,550 square feet in an R10 zoning district and AE9 flood zone, benefits from a pre-existing certificate of occupancy, 1973, certificate of compliance, 2013, for a hot tub with barrier on a grade deck. And a Building Department comments note that the premises is not considered a waterfront property. Applicants took title March 13, 2020, and this board finds this a type 2 action under SECR. The public hearing in this matter, Daphne Dawn, Vaughn of Surfside Environmental Planning, appears stating the applicant seeks variances to construct an in-ground swimming pool and patio on the premises. Ms. Vaughn testified that the premises is located in the Chinook shores development in, is an improved conforming lot that fronts on a Doug canal and contains a functional pre-1977 steel bulkhead which accesses the wetlands boundary. She explained that the pool and patio comply with Town Code setbacks but are placed within the required side yard of the principal building. Ms. Vaughn also testified that the Building Department noted that the existing 96-foot square foot, 96-square foot shed is located within the requiring, required side yard. Ms. Vaughn testified the project also maximized the setbacks from the wetlands and is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. We're in receipt of a letter dated August 25, 2021, from the Chairman of the Conservation Board stating that the shed and pool are in fact consistent. We find that it does pass the five-part test. Therefore, the board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code, number one, for the proposed swimming pool, Town Code 330-76D, and Town Code 330-83C, to allow the proposed swimming pool to be located within the required total side yard for the building, for the principal building. Number two, to legalize the slate patio constructed on the north side of the dwelling without benefit of a building permit for an accessory side yard setback of point zero, of 0.9 foot where 8 feet is required. And 330-76D and 330-83C to allow the slate patio to remain within the minimum and total yard, total side yard for the principal building. And number three, to legalize the 12.2 by 7.9 foot shed constructed on the north side of the dwelling without the benefit of a building permit. Town Code 330-11 for an accessory side yard setback of 5.2 feet where 8 feet is required. Town Code 330-76D to allow the shed to remain within the minimum and total side yard for the principal building. Town Code 330-76A to allow the shed to remain 3.7 feet from the main dwelling where a minimum of 5 feet is required, on the condition that the exterior walls of the shed and the dwelling have fire protection and compliance with the New York State Code. Number four, Town Code 330-84D pyramid height for an encroachment in the amount of 69.5 cubic feet. These variances are granted for structures as shown on the survey and pyramid sketch by Pat T. Sarafico, Sarafico Land Surveying, last revised August 23, 2021. Granted, this relief is also subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Hold on one second, Mike.
I didn't read the last line. Applicant is advised to keep all structures on their property as noted by the Conservation Board.
Second. Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Well, I think we're done, and it looks like we're coming back to Zoom. Nice seeing you all in person. Do we have a motion to close?
So moved.
Do we have, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are closed.